I'd like to reconvene the meeting from closed session and call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of May 4, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. And could you make a brief announcement about accessing the meeting?
Yes. In order to participate in the City Council Meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under the public comment portion or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar code ID number 82673519233. Please raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item. Please use the raise hand function in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a phone, please press star nine on the telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Thank you. Our first item this evening, oh, let's see, Mr. Watson, could you please give the closed session report?
Yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor and council and public discussions during the closed session where instructions provided to legal counsel, there should be no other report regarding the AgroHealth Enterprises versus Engle and Gray case.
Thank you. So our first item this evening is a proclamation and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation, it's really special for me because I've seen firsthand the positive and the benefits of Allen Hancock in our community as an employee. I will never forget, as many of us, our first day at work, our first week for me was, first week I was working at Santa Maria High. And I was talking to this girl, Claudia. She came up to the career center, Ms. Washington was on my side, and she approached and said, "Well, I was just sent here." "Okay, so would you like to come to Hancock?" "Like, no." "Say, why?" And I wasn't shocked for a second, but then she answered, "Because I'm too stupid." That's what she used to describe herself. And that got me off guard completely. And remember one of my mentors said, "Always ask why." Say, "Ask, why were you saying that?" And she said, "I don't know, it just doesn't get it." And we start talking about the struggle of going through high school and then what's coming up. And then, you know, Carlos always wanted to be a nurse. Let's do it. We have it. So we start talking about it and she applied to Hancock and right now she's enrolled at Hancock and looking forward to becoming a nurse. So those are, that's, since that day, I just, I just have a really internal feeling about Hancock and how we can change the odds and how we can, as a member of this great institution, be a nation of change. So thank you to Hancock and here it goes. This proclamation is for Allen Hancock College Day of Sentinel Celebration, whereas Allen Hancock College has served as a critical contributor to accessible higher education to the community since its establishment at Santa Maria Junior College in 1920. And whereas for the past 100 years, Allen Hancock College has dedicated itself to opening doors to students from Santa Maria and beyond who otherwise may not have the opportunity to attend college. And whereas Allen Hancock College is committed to providing equitable access to programs, activities, services, and employment opportunities to all with our regard to national origin, ethnicity, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or religion. And whereas Allen Hancock College established the Hancock Promise Program in 1918, ensuring every new high school student graduating the district receive their first year of college tuition free regardless of background. And whereas since its integrational cohort in 2018, the Hancock Promise has served more than 4,000 students who will join the ranks of Hancock alumni that have launched successful careers, become valuable community leaders, and embody the college's slogan of "Start here, go anywhere." And whereas on May 22, 2021, Allen Hancock College will celebrate 100 years of serving the community. Now therefore, I, Alice Patino, Mayor of City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize May 22, 2021, as the Allen Hancock College Day of Sentinel Celebration in the City of Santa Maria and commend Allen Hancock College, the premier college of northern Santa Barbara County, for 100 years of dedication to providing quality higher education and commitment to changing the odds for students in Santa Maria and beyond. In witness thereof, I have here on to set my hand and have cast the seal of this city of Santa Maria to be affixed heretofore this fourth day of May 2021. And this proclamation will be accepted by President Kevin Walters and Board Prosecutor Jeff Hall, who believe it's an awesome. The president is here.
Dr. Walters, yes, if you'd like to say something, we'd love to have you say something.
It says I have to speak in a normal speaking voice, so I'll have to think what that is. Thank you all. It's a true honor to have one of our great staff members here as a City Council member to read this to us and for the great friendship of the other council members and even our past council members who've been so supportive of the college. Our new slogan, we're adding a new slogan that you might have heard in there, "Changing the Odds," because we can talk all day about how our students overcome the odds and with the help of the city and our partners, we want to remove barriers and change the odds for our community. So we hope everybody will join us on May 22. If you go to hancockcollege.edu/100, you can sign up for the free gala. It's going to be a lot of fun. We've got a lot of bands. Prior Baird's going to play, Louis Ortega's going to play, Molly Ringwald Project. It's going to be a really great celebration of 100 years of changing the odds in North County, and so we're grateful for your support.
Thank you very much. And we so appreciate everything that Hancock has done for our community because that's really true. It's a game changer when the kids can go to school there and it's such an excellent school. Thank you. And let's see, the next item this evening is a proclamation and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is in honor of Compost Awareness Week, whereas the composting councils of Canada, Ireland, Australia, United Kingdom, and the United States have declared the first week of May to be the Annual International Compost Awareness Week. And whereas the City of Santa Maria Wastewater Treatment Plant has established a regional compost facility with Engle and Gray Inc., where the city's bios soils have been composted since 1993, transforming organic waste into beneficial compost product. And whereas the City of Santa Maria Solid Waste Division developed a successful green waste collection program diverting green waste and food waste from the landfill, conserving valuable land space, utilizing these valuable composted organics to build healthy soil and plants. And whereas this year's theme Grow, Eat, Compost, Repeat was selected to highlight the completing the cycle of organic material from farm to table to farm again. This cycle highlights the importance of compost in returning organic resources to the soil as an environmentally responsible means of erosion control, conserving water drought, during drought conditions, reducing water consumption and non-point pollution, and as a proven method of decreasing dependence of chemical fertilizers. And whereas the City of Santa Maria and Engle and Gray Inc. have created a partnership to serve the recycling goals of the Central Coast, and Engle and Gray Inc. has successfully taken organic feedstock and composted the material for sustainable landscaping, horticulture, and agricultural practices. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May 2 through the 8, 2021, as Compost Awareness Week in the City of Santa Maria in appreciation for the efforts of the composting councils, extension agents, homeowners, landscapers, farmers, recyclers, public workers, composters, gardeners, and plant growers and lovers everywhere.
And we will be sending that to Engle and Gray?
To Bob Engel via Zoom.
I believe he may be on the line.
Oh, he is? Oh, okay.
He is.
Mr. Engel, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Oh.
Thank you very much for recognizing International Compost Awareness Week and the effort that everybody here in Santa Maria makes with spreading their green waste, putting it in the right container and trying to keep the contamination as low as possible so we can make a great compost. And as part of the celebration, we're having a big event on Saturday from 9 to noon here at Engle and Gray's yard at 745 West Penne Arabia Road. And we're going to have free vegetable transplants. We're going to have free compost. And we're going to have little thing coloring books for the kids, and we're going to have kids making potting soil and putting transplants, veggie transplants into the potting soil and the pots. So we're going to have a big fun time from 9 to noon on Saturday.
Well, thank you very much. We miss our plants that you bring us every year.
Well, you'll get some tomorrow. I'm going to bring them by the admin office and they can distribute them to you.
Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate it.
Happy Compost Awareness Week.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have another proclamation and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just exactly like Councilmember Carlos Escobedo, this is extremely special to me having come through the field of law enforcement. This is a proclamation for our police officers. And whereas all of the promises in America offers, none is more precious or elusive than the right to be free of crime. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk, danger, and preserve our freedom and security. And whereas during the week of May 9 through May 16, National Police Week is observed to recognize the hazardous work, serious responsibilities, and strong commitment of our nation's police officers. And whereas in conjunction with this important observance, the City of Santa Maria is observing May 12, 2021, as Police Officers Memorial Day in commemoration of those noble officers who have tragically sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas seven California police officers were recognized as being killed in the line of duty during 2020. And whereas these special observances provide all Santamarians with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives. Therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor for the City of Santa Maria, recognizes the week of May 9 through May 16, 2021, as National Police Week and proclaims Wednesday, May 12, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Santa Maria and encourages all residents to remember those individuals who have given their lives for our safety and express appreciation. In witness here, where Alice Patino has set her hand and caused the great city of Santa Maria, the seal of the great city of Santa Maria to be affixed heretofore on this fourth day of May 2021, and it's signed by Alice Patino. And here to receive this is Sergeant White.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and Mr. Stillwell, all those in attendance, and all the community watching via live stream. It truly is an honor to be here accepting this proclamation. On behalf of the Santa Maria Police Department, and is it okay if I remove this? On behalf of the Santa Maria Police Department and as the captain of our department's honor guard team, we want to extend our gratitude for your continued support for the department and for issuing this proclamation, recognizing next week as National Police Week and next Wednesday as Peace Officers Memorial Day. As you heard, last year, there were seven peace officers that were killed in line of duty. In California alone, nationwide, there were 128, and that does not include the 234 nationwide that died as a result of COVID-19. Because of COVID-19, this is the second consecutive year that we've been unable to have our peace officer memorial at the department where we normally pay tribute to those fallen officers in ceremony and fellowship. But with this proclamation, we hope that we can all continue to honor their sacrifice and their legacy. So we thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you.
How was the meeting today with Rebecca?
Good.
And what's the, this is new for me. What's the rocker signify?
It's the rank of sergeant two, so it's considered a specialty assignment. It's a new rank within a department. It's, I guess you could call it kind of an active, you know, kind of watching position. So we're excited about it. There's two of us in this position right now.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of years ago, I went, I'd gone back to DC one time and went to the law enforcement memorial there during Law Enforcement Memorial Day.
Where was this?
In DC. And so you've got all these police officers from all over the United States, there were even the Mounties from Canada converging on that. And so it was amazing to see all the motorcycles just lined up down the street. And in the hotel we were staying, there was just, it was all filled with law enforcement people from all over the United States, and like I said, even Canada. So about two years ago, I went back to DC with Fighting Back, and Officer Lara, and Officer Wheeler, and Officer Sandoval were with me, and I took them over there so they could see the memorial. And it's just very, very nice, and it was really special to be there during Law Enforcement Memorial Day also.
I'll tell you, I don't know if either of these gentlemen have done it, but a few times I had the opportunity to attend the memorial in Sacramento, and it was incredible. When Bob Ramos was still with us, he used to organize that quite a bit. And it was, it's just incredible what you witnessed up there in Sacramento in front of the Capitol, and they have a huge, huge memorial set up there to dedicate to the officers. And it's just all police on fire.
Yep. Thank you. Next, we have, next item this evening is a proclamation and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And before I start the proclamation, I just want to publicly say to our police department, thank you so very much for all that you do. Santa Maria is very fortunate to have such a great police department, no controversies. We're doing a wonderful job. I do not put all police officers in the same box. My son is a police officer, my daughter-in-law's a police officer, my other son-in-law retired as a police officer. I grew up in the law enforcement world, and I respect, I respect you, I respect them all, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you do to keep the City of Santa Maria safe. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Mayor, with that, I will do the Water Awareness Month. Whereas the City of Santa Maria maintains a robust water awareness and conservation program that includes community outreach, school education, complimentary home water visits, and CSFIC leak notifications. And whereas the Utilities Department, along with other water purveyors in Santa Barbara County, annually observe the month of May as Water Awareness Month to emphasize and encourage the wise use of water. And whereas every industry, business, and residence can make a difference by conserving water at work, home, and school. And whereas residents of all ages and businesses and industries of all types are invited and encouraged to take advantage of the numerous tips and ideas to save water every day. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims the month of May 2021 as Water Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria and urges everyone to make water conservation a continuing way of life. And this will be, proclamation will be sent to our Utilities Department. Thank you.
Thank you. And every year, we always have the kids from the schools do their posters and everything, and this year, we're missing out on that. So anyway, we'll be back to our old ways by next year, hopefully. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to make any comment?
Okay.
Madam Clerk, we'll have the public comment period. Would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. And as a reminder, if you wish to speak during public comment, please raise your hand using the raise hand button in the Zoom portal, or if you're participating by phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad. When your time, when it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. And it looks like we have one speaker raising their hand, Ms. Lori Tamora.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lori Tamora, and I'm speaking in regards to the updated user fee schedule. I appreciate staff posting this on the agenda. There was some confusion as to what the final action was and how it impacted the fees. By bringing this forward, it clearly reflects what we think the City Council has taken action on. We do believe that one of the points was not clearly noted in this staff report, which is before any further fee increases are instituted by the staff, that a Citizens Advisory Committee would be established to review not only the fees, but the city process and trying to look at more efficiencies and methods to hold the fees to a reasonable increase. Again, we understand that the fees had, it was appropriate to go through this process to look at what the city is doing, and we look forward to working with the city in the future. We still have concerns about the appeal fee. We think that that's, the way that one is established in this new chart is going to prevent any appeals from anybody to be filed. And we also are concerned about the time extension fees, but we will work with staff to resolve those in the future. But thank you very much for posting this, both to City Manager Jason Stillwell and Mary Harvey for responding to the concerns that were raised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving, did you have any comments, Mr. Stillwell? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendars are approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escobedo? Yes.
Yeah, I would like to request the, pull one of the items, the item 3F.
Okay. Ms. Soto, did you have any?
That was the one I was going to pull.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read the title?
Please, if you could.
Item 3F is adoption of a resolution approving citywide user fees and furtherance of resolution number 202039.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, as I mentioned during the second reading of the, of this newest user fee study, I don't see that convenient to have just one, basically either go 100 or 50%. You know, I think that it would be worth it to start looking into detail to some of the items that can be, one of them was the credit card fee. During one of the conversations, the workshops, it was mentioned that it's possible not to charge it if we put a direct deposit. So we may, you know, instead of raising that fee, right now it's 1.25%, maybe we can help our constituents in not paying that fee, having direct deposit. So that's one of my, one example of why it's, I see a little bit of, it's a little bit dangerous to just put one criteria to everything.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Yeah, I, the only comment I have about the user fee schedule is that I still don't quite understand where the 50% came from. We had an in-depth analysis where we had highly qualified consultants come in and do an intensive study on our, on our user fees, provided valuable input, where, as you stated, Mr. Escobedo, they did an in-depth analysis of each one of the user fees that we have, that we had, that we have in front of us. And based on their proposed study, I mean, they made a recommendation, and again, I don't understand where the, just increasing it 50% percentage or number came from. We had a, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our constituents in making sure that we have the resources, financial resources, to be able to continue to provide the same level of quality of service. And I'm highly concerned that by not increasing the fees to the amount that was recommended by staff at the last meeting, that we are doing a disservice not only to the voters of Santa Maria and the taxpayers, but also to our employees because we don't know, you know, where we'll be this time next year when it comes to budget. And every year that we decide to postpone increasing fees to the full amount, that's more dollars that ultimately we are falling behind on.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve or not?
I make a motion.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Madam Mayor, can I clarify?
Yes.
That motion? Were we taking a motion on the item that was pulled for discussion, 3F?
Three up or the consent calendar?
It was on the consent calendar.
But we only had three up though.
Yeah, 3F was pulled for discussion.
Oh, I thought it was for a separate vote.
Oh, okay.
I think that's the way we have it on our.
I think you should probably clarify that. It's a tax.
Okay.
And just take that as a separate vote and do the consent.
Okay.
But my suggestion would be to take that last vote as a separate vote.
As a separate vote, 3 up and the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to adopt the consent calendar omitting item 3F.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to accept the consent calendar with the exception of 3 up. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Hi.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay. 3F?
No, we already did, we took that one.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We did it backwards.
Did it backwards. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will review a recommendation of the planning commission to approve zoning text amendment to amend Chapter 12 dash 56 of Title 12, the City of Santa Maria Municipal Code Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units.
And? And the staff report will be made by acting man, planning manager, Ms. Edie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. Just need the clicker. Thanks. So the city is proposing amendments to Chapter 12 dash 56 for accessory dwelling units. And those changes to the code are to conform with the new state law requirements that went into effect last year. Accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, are attached or detached units, dwelling units, that can, that include permanent provisions for living on the same lot as a primary dwelling. ADUs can be attached or detached from the main residence. And the amendments to the ordinance involve changes to overall development standards for both attached and detached ADUs, to multifamily residential units, to junior accessory dwelling units. And then there's changes that are to the parking requirements, owner occupancy and rental requirements, as well as to the impact fees. The new law, the new laws address some changes to development standards for ADUs, as I mentioned. So detached ADUs are detached from the primary residence, and they can either be a new construction ADU or an existing accessory structure that can be converted to an ADU. And under our existing ordinance, they, a detached ADU cannot exceed 50% of the square footage of the primary residence, or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less. And it's the setbacks in height required in the zone district. So the new state law changes that. So now the maximum square footage is just 1,200 square feet. And there's no size limitation if you have an existing detached structure that you want to convert to an ADU. They also changed the requirements for setbacks, so it's now four-foot rear and side yard setbacks for new construction. And if you have an existing detached structure, there's no specific setbacks for that. And then the height is what's permitted in the zone district. So for example, in a single-family residential zone, which is the R1 zone, the height would typically be 30 feet maximum. So for attached ADUs, an attached ADU can either be newly constructed and attached to the primary residence, or you can also convert your garage to an ADU. And the main change under the new state law is really related to the size of what you can build. So previously, you were really limited to 50% of the living area of the primary residence. And now the changes allow it to go up to 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet if it's more than one bedroom. And again, the setbacks are, are different as well. Now it's just four feet setbacks for new construction. And previously, it was what the zone district required. So it's just making it a little easier to build the units closer to the property lines. So another change is that the existing ordinance does not currently permit ADUs to be located on lots that are zoned for multifamily units, so for apartment units. And now the state is requiring that we permit these on lots that have multifamily units. The number of accessory dwelling units, it cannot exceed 25% of the, of the dwelling units. So in this particular example, there are 12 apartment units shown here on this lot. And out of those, you could do a total of three ADUs. And two of the ADUs can be detached, and that's, that's a maximum. And there's some height and setback limitations as well to the detached units. So another change is that junior accessory dwelling units are now permitted, and jurisdictions are required to permit them now. Whereas before, we had the option of permitting them, and so our existing ordinance does not currently permit them. So since the state's requiring it now, we do have it in our updated ordinance. They are only allowed in single-family zones. So those are zones that are zoned R1 and RSL1 in the city. There's one permitted per lot. They cannot be any larger than 500 square feet. And they have to go within the living space of the residence or attached to the garage. You can't build a junior ADU detached from the home or anything like that. It has to go within a room or rooms within the home. You have to provide a kitchenette within the junior ADU. You have to have an exterior access from the home. And one change as well is that you can, you can also do a combination. So this is a, a pretty big change, where you can combine a junior ADU with an attached or a detached ADU on the same lot. So it's a situation where you can have actually three dwelling units on one lot. You can have a junior inside the home, and then you can build a detached separately, or you can build an attached to the home.
Regardless of lot size?
Yes. Yes.
And what happens with setbacks? Are they just being, are they just the worst?
They're four feet for new construction.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. So there's also some changes to parking requirements. So previously, it was one parking space per ADU, and then there's a list of three different criteria, criteria to where parking would not be required. And that's if you were within half a mile of public transit, or in a historic overlay district, or if it was part of the existing residence, you wouldn't have to provide parking. So the state has made some additional instances where parking is not required. And so I have those on the slide, on this slide. And really, the main change is that previously, if you converted your garage to an ADU, you had to provide replacement parking for that. And now the state has said, no, that we no longer have to do that. So when you convert your garage to an ADU, no replacement parking is required. The one change is that jurisdictions have the ability to require replacement parking for junior ADUs. And so we have added that to our ordinance. So if you convert your garage to a junior ADU, you have to provide parking, replacement parking for that. So owner occupancy is no longer required for ADUs. So previously, the owner of the property either had to live in the main residence or in the ADU, and the state has eliminated that requirement. For junior ADUs, that requirement remains. So if you have a junior ADU on your property, you, the owner has to either live in the junior ADU or in the main residence on the, on the property. And both junior ADUs and ADUs can be rented, but they can't be rented for any less than 30 days. So finally, just some other changes. We are required to permit the application for junior ADUs and ADUs within 60 days now. It was previously 120 days. There's no minimum lot size required any longer. And then there was also a change to impact fees. So if you have an ADU that's less than 750 square feet, those are exempt from paying any impact fees to the city.
Reposses the neighborhood?
So state approval of the amended ordinance is required. We have been coordinating with the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We've sent them our draft ordinance, and they reviewed it and preliminarily approved it. But we have to send that to them within 60 days following adoption by the, your council. And so the staff recommendation is that the council introduce the ordinance for first reading and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption of the amendments that we presented in the staff report to you. So thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Waterfield?
What about homeowners associations? Can they keep control of their?
No, so the state has said that CCNRs are not, may not prohibit ADUs.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. I'm just, I think it's a sad day, this happening.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When someone decides to turn their garage into an ADU, does that trigger additional things with regard to parking, et cetera? Do they have to have like covered parking? Or does that, what does that change for the homeowner, if anything?
Yes, Councilmember Cordero, so if you convert your garage to just a regular ADU, you don't have to provide any replacement parking for the parking that's lost there. If you convert the garage to a junior ADU, you do have to provide replacement parking, and it can be within the driveway, and it can be uncovered. It doesn't have to be covered.
Okay, thank you.
So, so garage conversions could be ADU or just a conversion, right? Or they could be a junior ADU?
Yes, Mayor Patino, it could be either a regular ADU, or you could convert it to a junior ADU if you were in the, if you were in the R1 zone, so in a single-family zone, and, and that the garage is less than 500 square feet. Because junior ADUs are limited to 500 square feet. So if you're under that, then you can do that.
So if I get it right, the junior ADU requires to have a, a kitchen, a small kitchen, kitchenette, and, but not necessarily a restroom or bathroom? That would be one of the difference between an ADU and a junior ADU?
Councilmember Escobedo, yes, that's correct. So you can, if you're doing a junior ADU, you can share a bathroom with the main home. You just have to provide a kitchenette in it.
Thank you.
How long, how wide are sidewalks, like out in front of City Hall? Are they around four feet?
Approximately that, yes.
Yeah, I was thinking. So, and I've seen pictures where they, from the back, from the ADUs, they have this cement or a path that walks up to the front. So they've taken out trees, and they've taken out landscaping. I'm just paved over.
Yeah. In regards to the apartments, are they allowed to take out tot lots and things like that if they want to put ADUs?
Mayor.
Any kind of recreational?
Ms. Waterfield, you need to talk into your microphone. Put it on.
Councilmember Waterfield, no. So they would need to keep any amenities that were approved as part of their project. Those would need to remain. What apartment, multifamily developments, they can take non-livable space within the development, within the units, and they can convert those areas to an ADU. And so the state law talks about basements and hallways and different areas that aren't used for livable space. Those can be converted to an ADU. The other option is to convert a garage or a carport to an ADU. You can build new construction ADUs in multifamily, but they can't impact existing parking. It would have to be in an area of the property that was not approved for any other use.
So if you have a large front yard, you can build an ADU in front of your house?
Councilmember Waterfield, no. The front yard setback would remain. The only different, the, it's really four feet for the rear and side yard. So that's really as close as you could get. You could do an ADU as like a second-story addition, but the addition could not go past the, the dwelling or the main residence into the front yard setback.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your explanations. They're very clear to me. This next question I have is probably going to fall to the city attorney. It just seems to me that this is another effort in pursuit by the state of California to take away the responsibilities and decision-making process of the local governments, whether it's county or city or township or anything at all. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't the only pessimistic one in the crowd here.
There are even uglier bills up there at, at the state level. It's, they just want to stack and pack people. I, it's, it's hard to imagine. This, this fits fine probably in San Francisco or, or LA, but, but in a community like we have, where we have such a young community and so many kids, it just seems what's wrong. And so we have to do it.
To, Madam Mayor?
Pardon?
Yeah.
You have a question? Go ahead.
No, I, I just a comment. So, yeah, the question, sorry. So if, if we don't pass this, that's basically, Tom will be answering that question. If we don't pass it, that means that what, where do we stand, or we, or there's no option, basically.
So Councilmember Escobedo, you do have the option. If you don't pass it, then essentially, we would probably recommend rescinding or, you know, the existing ordinance. And, and then we would just be under the state law, which is essentially what we've done, is made this in compliance with the state law. But yeah, we would just be working under the state law. And I think maybe Tom has something to add.
Yeah. In the discussion between my staff and community development, we recommended this course for one reason as well. If you have something on the books that have, provides you even a little bit of control, you are, you do not automatically then have to accept the next state changes. If you simply go to the state law, as the state laws change, you're automatically incorporated in that, and you have no further action. So we recommend this at least as a interim step, as, as painful as it is, simply because what little control we want to regularly maintain.
So why are they making each municipality bring it to city council, since they're going to do it anyway?
Because generally municipalities have something on the books currently dealing with these elements, and that's one of the things we do. We have a, as part of our municipal code, items related to this, and they have to be changed. So either way, you either can repeal what you already have, or you can bring forward, as we've done, something with a Santa Maria twist. Those are your two options.
And in another year, they're going to take that away from us, too. So it's, I mean, you look at how this ADU got started a couple of years ago, and it didn't take them very long to, to rescind most of that to where we are today. So I think you just need to vote your conscience.
Well, it, it will continue to go. There is an advantage of doing it this way, is that we can then count these items for arena numbers, and we can do some things that, that is another aspect of housing, but at least we have some level of control, and, and that's why we recommend it.
Yeah, in the meantime, there goes the neighborhoods.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to open up for a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, I have no written correspondence and no one in attendance.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for any discussion and a motion. And I guess it seems, we see, so the state legislation passed in October of 2019, then they cleaned up the bill, and then they bring it back to here, back to us so we can adopt this. So I hated it then, and I hate it even worse. And I'm, I'm with you, Ms. Waterfield. I think they're going to bring it back in another year or two, and there's just going to be, if, if, if a four-foot setback and just little paths around these ADUs without any landscaping, any place for kids to play. And there is, I've said this before, there just is not going to be any zoning left in any cities, and we don't, we, we sitting here and the people that live in Santa Maria don't have the right to have what they want to have in their own neighborhoods.
After they purchase their own home.
Yeah.
It's just crazy.
So.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to introduce an ordinance for the first reading and can, and can, the ADU zoning text amendment for the first reading and continue to. and continue to feature meetings for a second reading and adoption, amending chapter 1256 of Title 12 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code regarding ADUs.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units. Any further discussion?
I would say that, I would like to just make a comment about this. You know, we are aware that we have a huge housing problem, not just California, but Santa Maria and the county. And I think that these kind of, the ADUs and the junior ADUs are, there might not be the, the things that will fix that. They will help addressing that, that, that issue. There will come out other issues like parking. So there's, you know, there, there's going to be something. This is not going to be like the thing that will, will fix everything. But I think that this is a good, this might be a good, it's a, it's a good option to start to minimize that, that, the lack of affordable housing.
I have one question. How many ADUs have been permitted?
I have that here. So since 2017, that's when we started permitting these, we have had 282 ADUs that have been finalized, so have had occupancy. There were more that were issued. So there were 488 that were issued permits, but out of those, 282 have been finalized. This year, so far in 2021, we've issued 133 and we've finalized 64 of them.
And any user fees apply to this?
Mitigation fees? No.
If they're over 750 square feet, they would have to pay, pay it. And we've had a few, but the majority of them, we see a lot of the garage conversions, and those are usually less than that.
Yeah, I, I don't see this as being a part of our answer because this is going to be market price and/or better. I just think it's going to make the price of housing go up. I, I, you know, we have a great need for families with, with young children and, and it would have, I understand would have to be subsidized. I just don't think this is going in the right direction.
I agree.
Anyway, that's my opinion. So any other comments, any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
No. Passes. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation from the County of Santa Barbara on the current state of homelessness in Santa Barbara County and consider approving the County of Santa Barbara's Phase II Community Action Plan to address homelessness.
And, okay, I have here, Mr. Ing is supposed to make the introductions, but you're not, okay, Rose. Ms. Rojo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council.
Good evening.
Tonight, joining us tonight is Lucille Boss. She is the Senior Housing Program Specialist for the County of Santa Barbara, and she is here to talk about the Phase II of this action plan to address homelessness and also how the City of Santa Maria can assist in those efforts.
Thank you. Ms. Boss?
Yes, right here.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you so much for welcoming this topic this evening. And my name is Lucille Boss, and I'm a Senior Housing Program Specialist with the County of Santa Barbara. Homelessness is a national, statewide, and regional issue, and in order to address homelessness on a regional and local level, we need a regional action plan and commitment. Tonight, we'll review the current state of homelessness in order to provide context. This includes local trends, funding, and COVID-19 impacts. And we'll provide an overview of the Phase II plan, and we'll ask for your support. The recommended actions here that the council of the City of Santa Maria received this presentation, adopt the Phase II Community Action Plan, and also determine subsequent impacts. In everything that we do, the plan is shaped around nine guiding principles, including promoting cross-sector collaboration and collective support, and incorporating those with lived experience and expertise at all levels of planning, policy, and implementation. Being grounded in community with regular and ongoing communication is also one of the guiding principles. With this in mind, here's what we as a region need from local jurisdictions. First, community engagement. Educating key stakeholders on the need for affordable and supportive housing. Engaging local businesses and government agencies to hire those experiencing homelessness or formerly homeless individuals. Coordination and planning. Creating a regional inventory map of all available or underutilized public and private lands for housing. You'll see in a few slides a map of Santa Maria. Identifying new sites for alternative housing models and vehicular parking programs across the county. Streamlining a comprehensive process for planning and input for proposed new developments. Ensuring all cities have an inclusionary zoning policy for new development. And potentially planning for a regional tax or bond local housing revenue creation program. Under coordination and funding, maintaining a comprehensive list of funds dedicated to homelessness. Aligning contracting expectations and best practices across funders. Ensuring regional capacity to apply for and receive all new funding from the state for housing and homelessness. And coordinating and aligning all regional funding for homelessness. The current state of homelessness demands our bold action to provide housing, shelter, and services. Many community-based partners, county departments, community members, and other local government entities have been building a system of care that provides the housing intervention and services that each individual or family experiencing homelessness needs to make at home. It is, of course, a work in progress. And I'm encouraged today to be here to share about recent investments and trends so that we can work together toward long-term solutions. The most devastating impact of homelessness is for the person or persons experiencing it. COVID-19 has further limited access to food, restrooms, and shelter. Yet, as we'll see in future slides, the unsheltered population is increasing. And I'll acknowledge that regional coordination is needed for geographic coverage, comprehensive outreach, addressing disparities, meeting needs through emergency rental protections, eliminating gaps in coordination, and strengthening and creating system changes. The number of encampments, the amount of belongings in encampments, and the risks and negative impacts for the person living in an encampment and the surrounding communities are growing. Responding to encampments has been increasingly challenging, and the conditions of, the conditions people are living in are distressing. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the California Department of Public Health released considerations for encampments early in the pandemic. Guidance encouraged communities to allow persons unsheltered or in encampments to remain where they are. Outreach providers are currently testing a mapping mobile application software, Fulprum, that is used by the county's fire department to increase efficiency in locating persons. And departments are at the table weekly to coordinate outreach efforts with community-based organizations and internally. Finally, on the slide here, Santa Barbara County has relied, has largely relied on state and federal funding to address homelessness. The recent increases in resources are largely one-time sources with quick expenditure deadlines and prescribed requirements. There's a critical need for reliable, ongoing funding to address the housing crisis. The point-in-time count is an annual look at the population experiencing homelessness on a single night of the year, typically in late January. The Santa Maria-Santa Barbara County Continuum of Care received a waiver from the Department of Housing and Urban Development because of COVID-19, and this waiver allowed us to not go out and canvass the community to conduct an unsheltered point-in-time count due to potential health risks. The continuum facilitated by a community services department did conduct a sheltered point-in-time count on the night of January 27, 2021. And each number here represents a person with a unique story and unique challenges. There is a significant decrease in the number of persons occupying our normal shelter and transitional housing operations. The orange bar on that slide represents the number of persons in shelter each year. Our shelter system staff and residents have managed COVID-19 outbreaks and capacity reductions because of the need for increased physical distancing, and they are some of the heroes of this pandemic. For 2021, the shelter population is divided between the year-round programs in orange and temporary emergency shelters there in green. One year ago, there were 674 persons sleeping in our regular year-round shelter programs. In 2021, only 407 persons were guests in those same year-round shelters. The green bar again represents the persons in temporary emergency shelters, 126 persons. The total shelter is 533, which is a 20% decrease from 2020. The temporary emergency shelters include room key, the warming centers, and the Isla Vista pop-up shelter. The blue bar on the slide is strictly a projection of the unsheltered population based on data modeling. The number of persons unsheltered across the county is projected based on the relationship between previous point-in-time counts and data collected in the Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS, and incorporates outreach and coordinated entry trends in the current data. The goal of the projection was to provide an estimate of the current population for planning purposes. This number will not be used for state or federal reporting, but the unsheltered population is projected to have been 1,662 on the night of the point-in-time count. Looking at local data in the City of Santa Maria, the slides here are based on housing assessments, and that was over 300 housing assessments completed in the City of Santa Maria since January 1, 2020. And I'll walk through each of the interventions here. The completed assessments are really for people who are still needing a housing intervention. And on the next slide, you'll see those who have been housed. To define each of these, permanent supportive housing can be longer-term rental assistance, case management, and supportive services to the most vulnerable chronically homeless. Rapid rehousing can be short-term rental assistance and services. Mainstream resources, typically publicly funded programs that provide services, housing, and income supports whether they are homeless or not. For example, financial assistance, healthcare, mental healthcare, substance use disorder treatment programs. And the inactive slice on each of those charts represents persons who have typically moved out of the area, declined services, found housing on their own, or are deceased. Again, in the local data, you'll see that since January 1, 2020, 149 individuals in the City of Santa Maria have been housed through the coordinated entry system, and 57 families. The individual lines, 63% experience, are experiencing chronic homelessness. The average age is 43. And I'll note here that the, the individual, the percentage of individual women, 43%, is higher than the rest of the county or countywide data where it's only 35%. 58% of those assessed state that emotional, physical, or sexual trauma caused their current episode of homelessness, and 45% income. And I point out income to note that many people are connected with benefits or services or are working but simply can't afford a place to live. Families, again, 57 have been housed from the coordinated entry system. 39% are experiencing chronic homelessness, and the average age is 35 years. The head of household is primarily female, 84%, and 16% male. 46% state that emotional, physical, or sexual trauma caused their current episode of homelessness. And in families, 65% have income. And note about disabling conditions. The terminology here is from the, from Housing and Urban Development, so there are HUD terms. So you'll see on here the number of persons or percentage who are physically disabled, that have chronic health conditions, developmental or learning disability, substance use disorder, and mental health or brain injury. And if it is of interest to the council, we can also provide some information about family assessments, justice system involvement, emergency room use, hospitalization, ambulance use, crisis line calls, and calls or conversations with law enforcement. Now, I referenced some of the one-time and ongoing funding. And so we're often asked, where does the money go? It can go to homelessness prevention, to system coordination, outreach to unsheltered, permanent housing, health and supportive services, and shelter or interim housing. So you'll see here on the slide parcel assessments and site identification. The county has identified parcels and unincorporated areas that could be used for supportive housing and low-barrier navigation centers on a by-right basis.
Sorry.
Yes.
Question, what, what part of the city is that? Is that the airport on this, is that on the side, on the south side?
Yes, so it, it is this area, but county unincorporated. So there are county identified parcels in the unincorporated areas that, that could be used on a by-right basis.
Thank you.
We'll shift into COVID-19 homelessness task force objectives. At the onset of California's stay-at-home order, a task force assembled to address pressing issues related to homelessness and meet these four objectives. First, to prevent and mitigate COVID-19 impacts for persons who remain unsheltered. And this is through support centers, outreach, re-establishing access to showers, device charging, food, and hygiene supplies. Second, establish a non-congregate sheltering, or establish non-congregate sheltering for persons at highest risk of COVID-19 complications and for persons with or exposed to COVID-19. Third, sustain congregate shelter capacity. And fourth, enhance homelessness prevention and housing activities through increased funding for rental assistance and supportive services. This task force continues to meet bi-weekly, and much has been accomplished under each of the objectives. And I'll highlight one of those objectives here under the homelessness prevention through emergency rental assistance program. The county assistance is offered through the United Way of Santa Barbara County through an online application linked here. And renters with questions can call the United Way or, and leave a detailed message or email the address listed on the slide. Funds can also be utilized for housing stability services that enable eligible households to maintain housing. And then Santa Maria referrals are to Family Services Agency, Legal Aid, and Good Samaritan Shelter. Now, before I shift into the Phase I and Phase II section, I'll pause in case there are any questions about the current state of homelessness.
Any questions from the council? None, thank you.
Thank you. The Phase I Community Action Plan to address homelessness was adopted by the County Board of Supervisors in June of 2019, and this report identified the five key strategies on the slide. They've been carried into the Phase II plan to bring continuity to implementation efforts. But this Phase I plan, adopted again back in 2019, allowed the county to be eligible for funding opportunities, such as No Place Like Home and the recent Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. So how did we get here today? The county contracted with Lhasar Development Consultants in 2019, and they hosted several multi-day visits in late 2019 and early 2020 where they heard from over 400 community members. Many of you were, were among those community visits and stakeholder meetings. And the process included collecting and analyzing funding, conducting a gaps analysis, presenting to elected leaders, and approval by the Santa Maria and Santa Barbara County Continuum of Care. I'll note that during the process, while those meetings were held in late 2019 and early 2020, around, last year around this time, we did pause as the document was being drafted to, to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. So that's the reason for the, the short pause there for a few months. But the document was completed late last year and again brought to the County Board of Supervisors in February. The plan itself has five system-level goals, so I'll go through each of them on this slide here. And while, I'll note that while the system of care will continue to serve all populations, many funding sources and programs target certain sub-populations. The first goal here is to prioritize ending or dramatically reducing homelessness for specific sub-populations. And we heard numerous times from stakeholders that we must demonstrate success to gain community support and build momentum. And one of the ways that we have begun this work is by partnering with the state and community partners on 100-day challenges. And the Santa Maria area has been very actively engaged in the veterans in the challenge to address veteran homelessness and youth homelessness. And in fact, one of the sustaining projects for the 100-day challenge to address youth homelessness is led by two Allan Hancock students, including the student trustee. And the veterans' efforts have been led by the Santa Barbara, in part by the Santa Barbara Foundation, North County representative and a representative from Good Samaritan Shelter. So we thank the, the community for their really active engagement in those challenges. And the, the populations are outlined in the plan, but the focus here is to end homelessness among veterans, and unsheltered homelessness among youth, prevent and end homelessness for families, and end homelessness for all other populations, including unsheltered and chronically homeless persons. The second goal on the slide is to increase The second goal on the slide is to increase housing inventory dedicated to homelessness. This includes both temporary beds and dedicated permanent units. Every day, we're faced with the same questions from community members, how to reduce encampments, or from a person experiencing homelessness, how to get help. These questions lead to the same answer. It has to start with a bed and a safe place to sleep. So how many units and beds? This, we'll go into this in the plan, but also in the strategies section. We create shelter beds when every bed is used a certain number of times each year by transitioning persons living in shelter to housing faster. Housing development dollars from the state of California have been increasing by sources like Home Key, No Place Like, and No Place Like Home, and leveraging low-income housing tax credits to minimize local investment. The third strategy is to create a culture diversion and prevention across the homeless response system. We really must address the inflow of persons becoming homeless in order to truly address the problem. 14% of persons entering emergency shelter are coming from housed destinations, an estimated 400 households, which could likely be prevented or diverted from the homeless system of care. It is widely expected that we'll see multi-year impacts from the economic and health impacts of COVID-19. A number of provider staff and agency leaders in our community have been trained in a recognized national best practice for diversion and prevention. The fourth is to improve overall system, homeless system performance. We must increase the impact of every dollar. Federal funding has shifted greatly to competitive performance-based awards, and the state has signaled that allocations will show the results-driven funding in their upcoming awards. We maximize impact by investing in strategies that are working. System performance is tracked annually by HUD, so it can be easily evaluated with a focus on increasing successful exits, shortening the length of time homeless, increasing income and benefits, and decreasing returns to homelessness by improving housing retention. And finally, the fifth system-level goal is to achieve the continuum of care strategies and benchmarks that were approved by the continuum of care in 2019. These include increasing the homelessness, homeless management information system bed coverages, addressing individuals and families at risk of becoming homeless, and increasing the rate at which individuals and families in emergency shelter, transitional housing, and rapid rehousing exit to permanent housing. Rehouse families with children within 30 days of becoming homeless. Increasing the rate at which individuals and families in permanent housing retain housing or exit to other permanent housing and minimize returns to homelessness. Increase access to employment, volunteerism, and community service, and promote partnerships and access to employment opportunities with private employers and private employment organizations. And increase non-employment cash income and increase access to other cash income. These align so well with many of the priorities and strategies developed in the plan that achieving the continuum of care-approved benchmarks was included as a system-level goal. Again, you can see the key action steps under each strategy and priority in the plan itself. I realize that is 104 pages, so I'm happy to direct the council to any pages if you have specific questions as well. So we, yes.
In regards to homelessness and placing people, there are homeless that do not want to be placed in homes at all. They'd rather live their life out on the street. And you count, do you count the same people over and over again as homeless? Or do you know that there's a group of individuals that stay in this area, and then you just don't count them anymore?
Mayor Proton Waterfield, thank you for that question. That is an important distinction to make. So one of the goals in the plan outlines making sure that you're addressing people on a case-by-case basis. So meeting people where they are, just like I think Allen Hancock likes to meet students where they are. Meeting somewhere, someone where they are is the first step. And then building rapport and determining what the best interventions are for them. So it may be that they've always been offered one housing intervention when they would prefer a different housing intervention, but that's never been offered to them. So it's a process, and it really needs to be done on an individual basis. I witnessed, I'm fairly new to this world, but I really witnessed that through the Santa Maria Emergency Shelter and Project Room Key and another project throughout the county in the past year and a half, that people who have been unsheltered in a park for 10 to 15 years are now in safe and stable housing. And it was simply because they didn't have the right person connecting with them, they didn't have the right interventions offered to them, or maybe they weren't at the right place in their life at that point to be able to accept and move forward with that intervention.
So do you keep on counting that these people over and over again each year for the count of homelessness?
If someone is no longer in shelter or no longer unsheltered, they are housed, so they are not considered to be somebody who is experiencing homelessness.
Once they're in shelter, how long do they stay there permanently? Is it their desire to stay there, or do they just kind of want to get out again?
Sure. So the goal is always to move someone into a permanent destination. So that is one of the continuum of care strategies and benchmarks. But really moving somebody from, whether it's individuals or families, moving them from emergency shelter or transitional housing or rapid rehousing and exiting into permanent housing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Other questions at this point?
Any other questions on Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the answer to Ms. Waterfield's question is yes, they are counted every year. Having been involved in the time and point count, but they start out every year. They don't, you start at zero, and every year they might get counted, but it's not like, the count is not mounting. They count it as one this year, and one next year, and one the year after if they're in fact still homeless. And then the theory behind it, in working a lot with United Way, is that if we can get them housed, and then they immediately do some of these wraparound programs to show these unfortunate people the fact that they can have better health, and better food, and better living, and they're not cold, and all these things. And hopefully, they will transition into that mental state of desiring a home as opposed to not having a home. So it is difficult, and you're absolutely correct. There are some that just leave me alone, and I'll be glad to live in the riverbed. Unfortunately, those people do exist, but I think that number is dwindling as the services become better educated and more improved over how to deliver the service to these people because they're not in a mental state where they can accept it.
Well, I don't know if you recall, but we had this one homeless guy, Nacho, that would come here periodically. And, you know, he demanded, you know, stuff for his drugs and for his alcohol. And he would only go to a house if he could still stay in that same demeanor of not having to recover or anything. And I often wonder what happened to him because I haven't seen him for a long, long time. I hope he's well.
We've had that kind of person in the community that seems to go from one to the next, to the next. There was a young man that lived over at the courthouse for years. All the judges knew him, and he would hide his stuff there. And he never hurt anybody that I know of. I offered to buy him a hamburger one time at a ballgame, at a youth ballgame 20 years ago. And he said, "I got money." He says, "I don't need your money." So he just, he didn't have a home, and didn't want to live in a home. But thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll shift into the strategies and priority areas. Again, in the plan and the document itself, you can see key action steps under each strategy and priority. The, we have tonight, in the previous council agenda item, and this has been discussing the need for shelter and beds and units, and increasing that inventory. So really, how many beds and how many units are needed? The GAPS analysis conducted as a part of the Phase 2 plan calculates the number of temporary beds, rapid rehousing, and permanent supportive housing, as well as long-term subsidies. And those details can be found on page 65 of the plan itself or page 218 of your agenda packet this evening. And you can review the details there of the projected costs of the different housing interventions.
What page, sorry?
I'm sorry, it's page 218 of your council agenda packet.
Thank you.
So we'll get into now the Phase 2 Implementation Work Plan, and this is really the focus of the plan. As Phase 1 provided those broad goals, the Phase 2 plan is designed to give the specific action steps needed to achieve the strategies through collective action. The work plan is dense with a great level of detail, and it's designed to be a working document. So this document here lives as an Excel document where we can consistently update as progress is made and as new information or assignments are made. You'll see there are steps that may be taken immediately and in the short term, as well as longer-term projects. The gaps in housing and shelter are overwhelming. And while funding dictates some of the pace of the work plan, it really gives the region the opportunity to prioritize steps. A note about reliable resources. So are reliable resources coming? None of the funding sources listed on this slide have been passed to the relevant legislative body, but there is hope. As far as key actions underway, the plan itself is not ordered as first, second, or third. It strives to build a system of care that has housing, shelter, and services to meet the needs of individuals and families, including the most complex cases. Many of the action steps are underway, and the availability of funding often sets the pace. Some key actions outlined here, permanent housing of veterans and youth. So I mentioned the 100-day challenges, really helped by Santa Maria and Santa Maria agencies. The youth challenge housed over 50 youth in 100 days. And the veteran challenge housed, it was a bit over 50 veterans as well. And we've consistently made progress toward our initial goal of 75. Another key action underway is to fully utilize all one-time funding with maximum impact, identify sites for interim housing, address COVID-19 impacts through temporary emergency shelters, fully leasing up new developments with adequate housing retention services and case management, provider capacity building, and expanded use of the Homeless Management Information System. This slide here shares some of the initial impact of one-time investments by new state and COVID-related funding to address homelessness. And this includes the Homeless Emergency Aid Program, a Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, and some of the coronavirus relief funds. Some projects funded by the one-time investments were either recently contracted or are ramping up. We'll shift now into implementation, coordination, and leadership. So how will we accomplish the key actions that are set forth in the plan and in this presentation? So first, adoption by the city councils. So we're, I'm pleased to note that several of the city councils, Carpinteria, Guelita, Santa Barbara, this evening, my supervisor is presenting to the city of Lompoc as well. They have all adopted this plan, and others are considering resolutions at a later date. Next, we'll shift into the Elected Leaders Forum, which is co-chaired by council member Soto. And I believe that many of the forums, Mayor Patino, Mayor Proton Waterfield, and council member Cordero, I believe you've all attended those elected leaders forums when we were in person and also via Zoom. And this body will provide policy direction and monitor progress on a monthly basis, whether through meetings or emails or memos. The Santa Maria and Santa Barbara County Continuum of Care will continue system improvements and coordination. And County Department Directors, Homeless Interagency Policy Council will address internal county solutions, priorities, and actions. And the Community Services Department in the county will convene key stakeholders to coordinate and advance action steps. And I'll end again on the recommended actions to receive this presentation, adopt the plan, and determine any sequin impacts. And I'll open for if there are any other questions for me.
Any other questions of Ms. Boss?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
It was right before the pandemic. I had the pleasure of being part of the point-in-time count, waking up pretty early, eat some coffee, and go around our city. And then I had also the opportunity of going to the riverbed with the Salvation Army and talking face-to-face with the homeless population. And even when I was, we had this, they had this program called Shower of Blessings here across the street, and I was invited by one of my Rotarians members. It was really interesting to see all the support that the homeless community had. And some of the things I've learned in this process has been that, as was mentioned, that it's a case-by-case. We usually see the homeless population as the bad, or, you know, we are scared. There's this misconception. But, you know, everybody has their, they're going through different situations. They're in drugs, they're having some mental disabilities, and so on and so forth. And it was actually Catty, the commissioner, my commissioner from the U, M.E.R. U. She was the one who invited me to the riverbed, and we went together. And she's a great advocate for homeless. And by the way, I give her a shout-out, great work being volunteer. And they want to recognize the work of the volunteers especially because there's a lot of people that are looking forward to support the community. And I think that's one of the biggest assets Santa Maria have, that we do care about the people that is coming next to us. So thank you to United Way, thank you for the county, the city, and everybody who's, who give back to the communities. The Santa Barbara County with the veterans, Stand Down, great job volunteering there as well. I'd like to be out there. And so thank you, everybody who's been there and giving back to the community.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. And I'm so glad that you were able to participate in the point-in-time count. That's before I worked in this world, I was a volunteer as well. And it really opens your eyes when you're having that direct contact with persons. And I think we're all grateful for programs like Showers of Blessing. When COVID, when the impacts of COVID-19 hit us, I think tonight we'll all be able to go to our home, have a warm meal, plug our phone in, take a shower, and have a safe place to sleep tonight. And for people who are unsheltered, when COVID-19 hit, they didn't have a safe place to sleep, they didn't have access to a warm meal because all of the food sharing programs ceased. They didn't have a place to charge their devices to know when their next health appointment was. So, and they didn't have a place to shower. They couldn't go to the gym or to the Showers of Blessing. So that's why it was one of the focus areas or the objectives of the task force to get that back up and running. I know more about how to access handwashing stations around the country than I ever thought I would need to know. But those are all pieces of what the task force really worked on with COVID-19. And we're really pleased to see North County in general, but also countywide step up to make sure that showers, food, device charging, and all of those support center pieces are accessible to people who remain unsheltered.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak?
No written communications, and no one on Zoom has an attendee.
Okay, I'll bring this back, this item back to the council for discussion. Any comments?
You know, I would like to make some comments. You know, I guess I come from a different perspective because I, and I was talking to Sylvia Bernard because she's been very successful on this. And she said that the Housing First program, when you house a person first, and they have not detoxed, and they haven't been in any kind of a program, you just can't take them off the street with their carts and say, "Okay, we're going to give you a house to sleep in, and call us when you need us." And she said, "You've got, you've got to get them, they've got to be committed to being drug-free and alcohol-free, and go into a detox program." And I know at one of the meetings when we were in Buellton, Doss Williams, from one of our supervisors, had said that too, that it was so important to get, to make sure that these people were committed to some kind of a program because then they could just live in that house, and they could do their drugs, and they could be perfectly happy. So when you have the standards, you have the rules that they have to abide by to get them to the point where they can clean up, where they can have an income, and then go into some kinds of transitional housing, it's really, really important for them. I think the, this is extremely ambitious, but that's, that's fine. It's better than saying, "Okay, when are we going to do this?" I was, when Roger Herro was with the county of Santa Barbara, and he asked me to be on the task force to do away with homelessness in 10 years, and I think that was 20 years ago. And his heart was, his heart was so big and was in a great place. And I, we just have learned a lot since then about homeless people. And I know- And, and I know we can't build our way out of this. So I think what concerns me, and I got some of the statistics today of, in the Santa Maria Valley, we have 5,047 students that have experienced homelessness this last year. And, and that's according to the McKinney-Vento definition of homeless, and that's kids who, with their family, live in a congregate living. And they, these are the kinds of things I'm talking about, we start talking about housing. These families would like to be in housing, you know, by themselves with a yard for their kids and everything. And then we have the kid that is coming out of foster care. And I know in Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, we picked up, I think it was two or three kids out of the riverbed and housed them. And two of them have now, have left the house, and one is going to school, and another one has a job. And so they can't just lay around and be couch potatoes, they have to be doing something. But they had never learned to cook, they had never learned to take care of themselves. And this is really, it's really difficult, because you don't think of a kid, you know, 18, and they're kicked out of the house, and where do they go? And we have a lot of the homeless young adults that are 18 through 24, and we have served 100 eight of those homeless youth. And that's still the 18 to 24, not to mention the younger kids that we have in elementary school and high school. And I really believe that we have to get these people stabilized. We now have a stabilizing center in Santa Maria that opened up, I think it was last week or week before last, that Sylvia Bernard is running, so that our police officers don't have to pick these people up or not pick them up, just leave them on the street, because they don't have time to transport them all the way to Santa Barbara. So we have that stabilizing center here, which is going to be very helpful. And, and I really, homelessness just doesn't happen by itself, and whatever that trauma is that sets that person off, most of us here have been through traumas that we have learned to cope with, and we have those coping abilities, but a lot of these people don't have these coping abilities. And so they need, once, once we get them stabilized and we get them in, in a home or in some kind of a setting, and, and then we can put those wraparound services on them. And I was in our depot street for a meeting last week, and there you have that chronic homeless, and each individual is different. And it's not any different than when you have a classroom full of kids and they have an individualized learning program. Every person is so unique, and, and so we just need to figure out how to deal with them, and it's, it's a huge, huge problem. I, there's a couple of things, more than a couple of things, I've got so many sticky notes on here, I'd be here an hour and a half if I read all these things to you, but there's a couple of things I'm not crazy about in this program, but I just want to be sure that we will do things in Santa Maria a little differently than you do down south, and to just respect that difference in the way we do things here. Sylvia Bernard has just been great in working with our community and has figured it out, even when, during the COVID, when the county put a homeless group at the, at Santa Maria High School. And they finally had to call Sylvia in to figure out how to do it, and, and I know she called me one day and asked me if I could call the superintendent, because she had to put a place so they could smoke on the campus. And so, but we, they went off, well, they, we found a place to smoke, because they were smoking on the, out on the driveway. So all those things that she's so uniquely informed about, which is such a great asset to our city, and I'm really pleased about that. I think that's about, the amount of young kids that we have there homeless really, really concerns me. And so, we, we know we need to do more housing up here, and, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of good housing here that we've done over the years, but we need more, especially for families. We have a lot of families up here with kids, more than they do down in the South County, so we do things a little differently. So I'm not going to read all my little notes on my sticky notes here, but Ms. Soto?
Thank you. First, thank you for coming today and addressing the counseling, providing us this really valuable information. I think it's really impactful when you read that, you know, oftentimes there's all these misconceptions that we have around unsheltered individuals, and it's so easy for us to put the blame on the individual rather than really looking at what systems are in place that keep people from, from being housed. And so, you know, when, when you look at the data, at the local data on Slide 10 that you provided the council, the disabling conditions that exist, you know, yes, substance abuse is one of those, but we also need to recognize that substance abuse is also and should be considered a mental health disorder or a mental health issue. And so, you know, when we're talking about ensuring that, you know, the most vulnerable among us are, are safe, especially during times of, of local emergencies, like during COVID-19, for instance, it's incredibly important that we do what we can to ensure that folks have access to safe, to a safe bed, but also to, to clean water and, and basic, basic needs like, like food. And, you know, and I think for me, just seeing that, you know, we also had a large number of families who, who, we have a large number of families who are, are unsheltered, and that, that we need to do more. And so I'm really appreciative of us as a county coming together and working on a coordinated effort. I think it's, again, very easy for, for us to, to get segmented, and, 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 yes, you know, there, there are, there may be some, some differences, you know, across, across the county, but ultimately, right, whether it's someone that's unhoused in Santa Barbara or Lompoc, or in Guadalupe, or in Santa Maria, we're one county, and one unhoused person here, or, you know, in Florida is, is a concern for us when, when, you know, especially when we say that, you know, we're all in this together. And so, really looking at systems that, that can help enhance the quality of life for all residents in Santa Maria is, is a key priority for, for the council as well as, I'm sure, city staff. And so, again, thank you for providing this really invaluable data and for doing the work that you're doing, and I'm excited that we are going to move towards a coordinated effort with the county to ensure that we can bring as many resources as possible to, to our region.
You know, the power of God Church is doing showers now, so they do it once, once or twice a week. I can't remember, I met with the minister there. So that, so the word got around that they're doing it. At first, he just had a few, but now he has quite a bit.
Are they doing it with the trailer or with the, with the facility itself?
I think with the facility. He would like to have a trailer there. Did you have a comment, Mr. Cordero?
Oh, just.
Any other comments?
If not, I'd like to make a motion. Do we make two motions for this? No? One motion to adopt a resolution approving the County of Santa Barbara's Phase Two Community Action Plan to address homelessness.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk. Any further discussion? Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. And thank you very much for coming up here, because a lot of times, the sound isn't that good if you're far away, even if you're outside of the room, so to be here and give the presentation very, very thorough, thank you so much. Next, we have another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes. The City Council will consider authorizing the Receipt of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Grant Program Funds.
Okay, and the staff report is made by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. So the United States Congress adopted the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, commonly now known as ARPA, to provide financial assistance to the City of Santa Maria and other governments across the United States to both mitigate the financial impacts of COVID, as well as to stimulate economic recovery. The local funding portions approximately $130 billion for all of those, those local governments, equally divided between cities and counties. Localities will receive the funds in two tranches. The first after the U.S. Treasury certifies the proceeds to each jurisdiction, and the second payment a year later. So ARPA funds must be expended by December 31, 2024, and if the funds aren't spent, they must be returned to the U.S. Treasury. The City of Santa Maria is slated to receive approximately $40.6 million. The legislation provides broad statements regarding the use and restrictions of these funds. Specific guidance and further restrictions are expected later this month. The legislative intent of the funding is for Santa Maria to use these funds to respond to the COVID-19 emergency and address its economic effects, provide government services affected by revenue reduction resulting from COVID-19, investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The restrictions in the legislation include the funds can't be used directly or indirectly to offset tax reductions or to delay tax, tax payments or tax increases, and the funds cannot be deposited into any pension fund. So that's the broad legislative priorities, and then we're waiting to see what the Treasury guidance in the specific fine print adds to that legislative authority. The, we face challenges in spending the funds even before knowing what those guidelines are. There'll likely be more restrictions than the ones I just mentioned, but the biggest challenge we see is spending that money and the time constraints required. There's a lot of projects that we've talked about wanting to do. There's a challenge of being able to do those and get them approved and designed and under construction and completed with the payments made in that tight, tight-cut time constraint. So that's one real constraint that we have to face. And also, like most grants, these ARPA funds are considered one-time revenues, and therefore should not be used for new programs that would have to be cut when the funding expires. So no ongoing or long-term program or project commitment should be made using one-time funds that will have a future impact on the general fund. Instead, the staff recommends the city adopt a three-pronged strategy to determine how to use the ARPA funds. So first would be to immediate, provide immediate relief by funding the costs incurred, the revenues lost to the city as a result of COVID-19. The second would be to invest in projects that have been deferred due to lack of funding and will assist the city by either increasing ongoing revenue or reducing ongoing expenses, so essentially spending money to make money or to reduce costs. And then third would be to strengthen the city's financial position, focusing on financial stabilization and healthy reserve balances to better prepare for future economic challenges. City management staff are actively evaluating projects that will fit the above criteria plus the time constraints, and we're waiting to see what other constraints we do get from the federal government to use this grant money and the other eligibility requirements. Some projects that do seem likely to be able to be used for these funds to support and that we think we can complete in the timeline are the energy efficiency projects that the council previously reviewed and approved. Information technology enhancements to more cost-effectively and efficiently provide services, and expanding broadband capabilities within the city, which is one of the specific points they mentioned in the legislation. However, ARPA makes it clear that a nexus to one of the broad use categories described, that I just described, requires, is required, and that the federal government will conduct audits to ensure spending is consistent with the ARPA requirements. So jurisdictions that cannot clearly demonstrate the nexus will be required to return the funds. So we anticipate it'll be a lot like CDBG funds, the requirements with CDBG funds, because they are, this is federal money with, we anticipate similar federal requirements. So, again, to facilitate quickly, so the goal, what we're asking from council today is to help us quickly expend the funds to benefit Santa Maria and meet the federal government guidelines. And so we're requesting three actions by the City Council. One, to receive and appropriate the funds. And so if the council agrees to receive it, we ask that you appropriate it. That way, it'll be in the budget, and when expenditures start, we'd be able to begin expending it based on council's direction. The second would be create the, the policy framework for spending the funds, which is included in the recommendation, which the three points are to reimburse costs incurred and revenue lost as a result of COVID-19, invest this one-time funding in projects that can be completed in the required timeline, and either increase ongoing revenue or reduce ongoing costs, and strengthen the city's financial position to prepare for future fiscal emergencies. And then third, we're asking the council to authorize additional staffing to do the work necessary to complete the projects that are identified. We're requesting grant-funded at-will limited-term full-time and part-time positions, and we'll develop the specific job descriptions as the projects are identified and returned to the City Council for review and authorization of those job descriptions and approval of the positions for the jobs, but.
Will this be three different adoptions separately?
No, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, one, yeah. And with the employment, so we, what we do know is it's a lot of money to spend quickly. We're not sure which people we would have to bring in to help do that. We anticipate a lot of contractors doing the work, but we also anticipate we may need additional project managers or people to manage the contracts or to work through the RFPs and the procurement process, maybe staff to help us manage the funding of it. So that's where we're focusing on the additional staff, the staff only to be funded by the grant for the period of the grant.
And it won't affect our pension, that owing, our pensions won't increase by hiring these people?
I think they actually would be perishable, according to.
Would they?
Rules, yeah.
So once you hire a, a city employee for this one specific, the Federal American Rescue Plan, they're, they're going to walk into this position knowing it's only for a certain length of time?
Yep.
And then they will be released from, from their duties after that?
Yep, that's correct. I mean, they, the individual can apply for other jobs in the city.
Oh, no, absolutely, yeah. But that position, because we're not, because, you know, it's one-time money, and we don't want to just keep on funding pensions and pensions after, after this, so definitely.
Yeah, I do share that, that was one of my, one of the things I was a little bit shocked when I was reading at the beginning. I believe that we shouldn't make government bigger and bigger, we should, and more with this money that's one-time money, and try to keep as much, as much as we can on the street, so people can actually see that the money is being used to, to their benefit.
Any other questions of Mr. Stillwell? Or Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that we're all starting to have the same feeling here, Mr. Stillwell, and that is that we're concerned about allowing the money that is one-time money to be, to go in to be money that we spend in perpetuity, and of course, you already know that, so I think we'll probably be safe there, so that we're hiring essentially full-time, part-time people. And I don't know how we could do it without picking up more people with the workload that everybody else has. Where are you going to put them? I guess maybe we put some trailers in here or something like that. I think there's a building across the street here that might be available for some room.
We do contractual things all the time, though.
Yeah, so none of these, this structure already is in our municipal code, in our personnel code. So we do use limited service for recreation and parks, we do have grant-funded positions, we do have at-will positions, but we're just focusing those three attributes on these particular positions tied to the ARPA funding.
Okay, I know we don't know all the restrictions now, but I made, I made a list.
True, yeah.
And I know that when our roads people were here a while, a while back, they said we were 3 million, we had 3 million deficit in roads. And we have a lot of places where we don't have paved alleys, and they're really sporadic, sporadic on certain parts of town, and sidewalks, that we don't, you know, places that we don't have sidewalks in town. The sewer and water pipes in the, in the downtown haven't been replaced, have they even replaced since that town was built?
Some, no.
Okay.
Whether or not they fit in there, they may not fit into the.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know. Because we'll, we'll know more restrictions, but we, we want to do something with the downtown specific plan, and we can't build down there until we get those water pipes and the sewer pipes done, because that is part of getting. pipes done, because that is part of getting that downtown built. And I said, "streetlights," and...
And what we mentioned tonight about the audio system in here and maybe some monitors up on this wall, because it's just, you know, you've got so many angles to this room, it's just, it's kind of hard to stretch here and there.
Now, we have a lot of people who couldn't pay their water bill, right?
That's right.
And...
1.3, no, 1.9 million at this point.
Dollars?
Yes, well, it's accruing at 100, between 100 and 200,000.
Gallons.
Yes.
Are they getting, are they accruing, like, late fees every time that they fail to make a payment?
Yeah, the challenge is we're not able to shut them off, and we did find there is funding through the state and the county to help them be able to pay their late fees, but what we found, that money is only available if COVID caused them to fall behind. And what we found here is a lot of our regular kind of customers who fell behind just continue to fall behind, so they weren't qualified to receive this assistance. So, if there are people that were impacted by COVID that can't pay their water bill because of COVID, there is funding available to assist them, and we are assisting and encouraging them to go through the United Way where the funding is being provided. And it's both funding to help people stay in their home who were impacted by COVID and to help them pay their utilities if they're impacted by COVID.
And then, what about, like, some of the charges that we did for, maybe for the pool or something with recs in parks and some of our parks?
Yeah, we, yeah, we do think that could be part of the repayment for criteria one that we're recommending, but we've looked at estimated loss of revenue in, sorry, we got, we've started a list and we're adding the items you're mentioning to the list.
Would you like my little sticky note here? I can give it to you.
Yeah, loss of library revenue was 60,000, loss of recreation and parks revenue, 60, oh, well, yeah, depends on the program, but yeah, it includes loss recreation parks revenue, loss transit revenue, loss utility revenue. One that was new that we didn't anticipate was potential additional workers' compensation exposure as a result of COVID, although thankfully, we never did have an onsite spread of the coronavirus, but, you know, those will work their ways through the process, and we'll see if we do have exposure based on judicial review.
What about replacing the money that we took from the capital project of the parking lot to supplement the swimming pool because of the COVID thing, and can we, we did a switch ero there?
Yeah, so I think, so we'll look at the guidelines. So, we won't be able to replace the funding back into the reserve, but I think we might be able to do that project. The question will be whether deferred maintenance is qualified. We guessed that it is.
Yeah.
But I did talk to some public works folks over the weekend. They said they weren't sure roads were going to be qualified because the legislation specifically says water, sewer, and broadband. So, it's...
That goes under the roads.
Right now, we don't know if it's excluding the other stuff that's not in there, or if it's just the stuff that was identified by Congress are the priorities.
So, one of my questions would be, so after, if we go through this, what would be the next step? Start working on a list of projects and then wait for the federal government to tell us what are the criterias, which ones can go through, which ones cannot?
Yeah.
Because I have a list from...
So, yeah, if you have a list provided to me, and we'll add it to the big list, just to, we want to have a recognition of all the projects we have available, and then prioritize them by being able to get them done, and that meets the guidelines of the grant funding, essentially. So, the processes will be different. So, for example, the energy efficiency projects have come to council, and so we can just start doing the work on that. We anticipate beginning the work on that, but we want to verify that it qualifies based on the guidelines. Other projects are going to require approval by the City Council for, at least for the procurement process. Others would be in the supplemental budget action, such as the workers' compensation claims, and then there's other smaller ones that we would just have the authority to be able to do based on council's action tonight we're recommending.
Yeah, because I think there would be a lot of things that would, because we've been sitting on this downtown specific plan for so long, and we know we want to get it done, and it just seemed like if you get, guys get real creative, I think we could probably get, put some of that money into the downtown. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Stillwell, when, if you know when, do you believe the Congress will be releasing the criteria for this?
So, the Congress, we have the congressional legislation, so we know the big picture, what they want to accomplish with their funding, and the guidance will come from Treasury, and they're, I believe they said either, well, May 11th is when we're estimating it might, we might see it.
Okay.
Or that's the dates that they've been saying, either they're required to release it prior to May 11th, or that's the date they've given out. I'm not sure which, but May 11th.
Do you foresee that we're going to be in such a time crunch that we may be having special meetings in order to do specific, just single projects?
Well, so the big, no, the short answer is no, and the reason, so the big challenge we have is spending that first tranche, because as I understand it, again, we'll look at the guidance, if we don't spend the first tranche of money, we don't get as much of the second tranche. So, we want to make sure, we have plenty of projects, we have a list of 106 million, so we're confident that we need the 40 million. And so, I think we can spend that first tranche through the couple of projects I've mentioned, such as IT, or information systems upgrades, such as in this room or in the IT services we provide to our customers. We also think with those energy projects, those are in the works, and we'll be able to complete those. And then, a number of the COVID costs that we've had over this past year, I mean, between the legislation says lost revenue or costs we've incurred, and it's, the cost of us moving utility billing and finance across the street was a COVID cost, the cost of putting the glass and the barriers and germ shield in our buildings was a COVID cost. So, we think those are eligible costs, and they are clearly things that weren't in the budget, and we didn't have a capital plan to do that. It was as a result of COVID, but we need to see whether the guidelines allow for that.
Thank you, Sarah.
What about our broadband and having hotspots, say, at different community centers throughout town? Because a lot of our kids didn't get to, you know, couldn't go online, and it seems to me that would be a good thing to have anyway, for our kids to be able to go to some of these community centers to do studying, and, you know, I, some of them may, again, I don't know what's going to happen with schools, but some of them may have kids just maybe if they want to opt out, or they have some medical reasons, and they have to stay home maybe for a couple of weeks or something, and to have that facility available to these kids and families.
Yeah, we're, the library does have Wi-Fi, and they actually do checkout hotspots if people want to take them home and use them, and they're a popular checkout item. We're in a fortunate spot in that we now have the broadband ring, the fiber ring, so that's really just the, that's the, kind of the plumbing to allow the other things that we're talking about to be added on to it. So, if we upgrade this room, we can tie it to the fiber ring, or if we do more hotspots, we can tie it to the fiber ring. We're looking at having more information available for transit riders, as you saw in a presentation a month or so ago, for people to have more information of when the bus is coming, more information when they're on the bus, mobile Wi-Fi on the bus, and so all those things are available due to the technology investment we've had. So, there is a lot of opportunity to build on that and provide more services to the public and more Internet of Things, essentially, and the issue will just be which of those are eligible and which can we build within the next year.
I think what we, yeah, I think what we also need to look at, too, is that all the municipalities will be getting money, and all of the services we want done, other municipality's going to want them, too, so there's going to be a lot of people out there, and trying to get the people to do the work for us, we need to make sure that we get first in line or reach out to them, and, because they're going to be impacted, too. The workers, the suppliers are going to be impacted, and so that's going to slow down the timeline for when we have to spend the money. So, the sooner we do it, the better off we're going to be, is engaging with those people that provide the services.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
We're expecting to get those guidelines during this month.
May 11th.
May 11th.
That's, we think, I mean, this one, yeah.
Madam Clark, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak?
No, we have no written, sorry, we have no written communications, and there's only one attendee who does not have their hand raised, and they're on the phone.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion or comments or questions?
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing, one, the receipt and appropriation of funds from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 program, and, two, the use of Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 program funds to, A, reimburse costs incurred and revenues lost as a result of COVID-19, B, invest in this one-time funding in projects that can be completed in the required timeline and increase ongoing revenue or reduce ongoing costs, C, strengthen the city's financial position to prepare for future fiscal emergencies, and, three, direct staff to create and return to City Council for review and authorization a grant-funded, at-will, limited-term, class, full-time and part-time positions to be utilized for the hiring of additional personnel to do the work on the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 program projects.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Haring Nun, Madam Clark, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So, the next meeting of the City Council is May 18th. A couple items of note, we'll have the annual presentation from Central Coast Community Energy, formerly Monterey Bay Community Power. This will be the first report since our city has opted into the, to the program to receive our energy from Central Coast Community Energy, I believe, and they'll confirm, I believe we have the highest rate of subscriptions of anyone who's been in the program. I think we're at 98 or something percent, so that'll be good to hear from them of how the transition of our folks in our community went, transitioning from PG&E to Central Coast Community Energy. Also, we'll have the third quarter financial report, and those are the highlights from 18.
Okay, we'll hear from council members.
No reportable items, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Madam Mayor. My reportable items are, on April the 21st, I did the Ben Hayes Radio Show. It's our post-City Council meeting. I had a 9:00 AM CCWA pre-briefing meeting with Shat Springer. On the following day, I did the CCWA Board of Directors meeting, and on Wednesday, April 28th, I met with, at the residence at the Depot Street to discuss the issues that have been going on over there, and also wanted to let people know that Thursday, May the 6th, we are going to be having the National Day of Prayer, and that's going to start at 11:30. It's going to be at the Fair Park, at the Santa Maria Fair Park parking lot. We'll have the stage, the city stage out there, and everyone can, it'll be a drive-in, so bring your car, bring lunch, bring a chair to go sit out by your car in, and it's going to be a very, very nice event. Lisa Padrogie, who is chairing this, has done an excellent job, and her team members have just been great in putting this all together, and a great shout-out to the Santa Maria Fair Park Autumn, who has just been so gracious in allowing all this to happen, too. So, just want to say thank you to her as well.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last April 21st, I attend my first meeting at, with the Quarterly Schools Meeting, and Saturday, the 24th, I attend the 20th anniversary of Extreme Electronics, 20 years in business, a small local business, really happy, they got Lotteria, and it was, it was really fun. And then, yeah, well, another thing, last, the 28th, Wednesday 28th, was the priority registration up for the Promise students at Hancock, was one of the busy days of the year, but I'm really happy that we got a lot of them registered for classes, and I wanted to give the whole team a shout-out at Hancock, and my ybonteniente, my boss, and the outreach team, and the staff. It was crazy, but it was a good day for students. And also a reminder, those that have not registered, I'll be there for you guys. So, that's, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I had the very esteemed opportunity to attend a retirement party for Bruce Corssall with the local SEIU. It was entertaining, and it was, it was quite, quite a, quite a group of people showed up from throughout the county. I was, I'm also very pleased to share with you that the Elks is now starting to open up and have more people in, still trying to do the social distancing that are required by the state, and it's, but you can see it's starting to happen where the community is starting to become more available to the average citizen. Other than that, Madam Mayor, I have had many meetings regarding our queen candidate at the United Way, things of that type, but other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you. So, April 21st, I did the Quarterly Schools Meeting, and then I did the Riverside County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force, and did the California Cities Mayor Roundtable, and then later that afternoon, I met with the Transitions Mental Health Association Board. On the 23rd, I did a Zoom with the Addressing Hate Crimes and Asian-American Pacific Islanders Discrimination webinar, did the Santa Maria Stabilization Center Walk Through with Good Sam, and then I went over to Merrill Gardens and helped celebrate the 100th birthday of George Hipson. On the 28th, did the Marion Foundation Board of Directors. On the 29th, I did the Santa Barbara County Legislative Briefing. On May 4th, did the Ben Hayes Show, and that was it. So, anything else from the dais? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.